Our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Commissioner's meeting to order at 1:10. Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco. Commissioner Tomin. Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Chairman Bone. You have a form.
Okay. Do we have any additions, deletions?
Yes, sir, we do. Mr. Chairman, item 3A Retirement Board Reappointment, we would like to move that to item 11I. And Proclamation for Season of Nonviolence, which is 3B, we would like to move that to 6B. And item 3C, the County Clerk's Office Update, move that to Miscellaneous Business.
Do we have any additional additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? If not, could I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Make a motion, do we approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Minutes previous meeting.
Make a motion to court.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Six. Six eight.
Make a motion for the proclamation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have one for Homeland Security Emergency Management. I don't see anybody here from them, so why don't I forego reading this for now and we'll present it to them at another time.
All right.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Six B.
That's yours, Howard.
Consent agenda, I would move the—
Howard, six B.
The proclamation—
Proclamation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would move the approval of the proclamation for the season of nonviolence, which will be declared from January 30th of 2014 through April 4th, 2014, and I will present that.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Well, I'll go ahead and take this one. Commissioner Samasco isn't here, so this time I'd like to move to approve items 7A through 7F on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Moving on to number eight. Do we have any reports of standing and special committees?
The Judiciary and Public Safety has no report.
Oh, we'll start then.
Just the—I—I met with the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and just to tell you, so you know in advance, I've requested they come before us and talk to us about the requests from many of our local communities to provide services, especially in the area of planning. And there's some concern that they have the necessary staff that they're going to be able to accommodate. As you know, the Library Department, the Health Department, Grant Township, Algenac, I could go on and on where we've had requests. We just had one from St. Clair Township to provide services. And I think what is happening is they're doing such a great job that a lot of our local communities are saying, hey, we need to keep up on this, and they're a great resource to do it. So I've asked them to come before us and explain the dimensions of that.
All right. Do you have anything else?
Nope.
There's town.
The only comment I would make is I have met with the Planning Department in the County Building and here on District 4, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to—because I have a vacancy, and we're going to be looking for that. I have a meeting set up with Council on Aging, which is another part of me, and for the same thing.
All right. I have nothing. We'll move on to number nine. Do we have any citizens wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Ten, any unfinished business? All right, we'll move on to eleven. Eleven A. I'd like to move at this time to approve the county disbursements for December 2013 in the amount of $8,241,291.78.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just a notice here. I noticed with the procurement card transactions, there were quite a number, in my opinion, that were submitted with no backup, and I was just wondering if—we're on top of that.
Yes, we are unfortunately with the COVID, we have contacted the department to check out whether the park has a supply. We can assure that all backup does come in, and we are too happy to use them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Noted, Tomin and Samasco absent.
Okay, moving on to eleven B.
I—I would move the—oh, I'm sorry. I would move the approval of the—sorry about that. The approval of the Change Order Review Committee Policy—Policy Review.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just—a comment here, if I might. To—to change this policy, we have to—it's going to take how long, Bill? By the time we go through all the steps?
We actually have to—there's a 30-day waiting period when we send it out for comment from all the department heads, that it comes back to the board for any final changes or consideration that's necessary. So it'll be back in front of you in 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Pass eleven C.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Robert Schulte to the Commission on Aging, District Five, for a three-year period expiring 12/31 of 16.
Have a second.
Support. Is it Richard Schulte?
Yes.
Okay, yep. Support.
That's a reappointment, right? He wished to continue serving. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. All right, we'll move on to eleven D. This time I'd like to move to approve the agreement with Community Mental Health for a post-traumatic stress disorder seeking safety services for intervention center inmates in the amount of 12,000 for a term of 10/113 through 9/3014. Have a second.
Support.
Do we need a roll call on this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to move on to eleven E.
Mr. Chairman, I would move at this time to approve the dispatcher training distribution grant for 2014.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Eleven F.
I'll make the motion.
I'll support it.
This is for the inter-agency agreement between the Public Guardian Office and Community Mental Health. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. Eleven G.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move the authorize a contract with reasonable roofing for the replacement of the East and West Exhibit Barns at Goodell County Park in the amount of $128,416 plus any required roof decking repairs.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomin.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Moving on to eleven H.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to close nominations for the Metropolitan Planning Commission Member at Large position with a three-year term expiring 12/31 of 16 and a cast ballot for the said position.
Court. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to chime in here for a quick sec. John Steffey, who I know personally, actually, John was appointed to the board before, but at that time, John is actually a contractor. He sits on China Township Planning and stuff. He didn't—he wouldn't be able to bid on any of the work, so that's why he unappointed himself. He doesn't seem to think there's going to be any conflicts at this time, and I think he'd be a good candidate, so.
Any other discussion?
Looks like we have two really good people interested in this position.
Very qualified.
I'd like to comment on that, too. Wayne Biden had called me. He apparently was on it years ago, and—and then he's just recently got elected in a council member of the city of Marysville, on their council. And Wayne had called me when it became vacancy because of the previous person being in there and had a medical situation. And so I—for one, am going to back Wayne Biden.
We have some ballots, clerk. Please.
And also, I do have to say this, too. I want to agree with Howard. We do have—both candidates are very qualified. I don't mean to say that the other candidate wasn't qualified. He certainly is. So I think we have—luckily, we have two people we can pick up here.
Can you just take a voice vote on closing the nomination?
Okay.
All right, all in favor in closing the nominations?
Aye.
Aye? Nominations are closed.
Excuse me.
I know it's all the glasses.
I'll tell you after, though, when I started.
For the record, Mark and Samasco's absent.
All right, I have one for John Steffey. One for John Steffey. One for John Steffey. One for Wayne Biden. One for John Steffey. One for John Steffey. Five, one, John Steffey. This time can I have a motion to appoint John Steffey?
I would so move, support.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. Okay, I'd like to move on to eleven I.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve Mr. William Blumerich and Mr. Bill Kaufman to the Wards and Commissions Committee Report Retirement Board.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Before you jump on that, did we have commissioners received copies of the actuarial reports? Did you guys get those at all?
No.
We should probably get a copy and distribute and just chit-chat a little bit about what's in those reports and the science funded, that kind of stuff, so. Be a good job for you, Carrie.
Okay. Did we already pass it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. All right, we'll move on to 12, the Administrators' Report.
I'll do my best to keep the report short this week. Spend a few minutes, a little bit of an update on what's going on with the Convention Center. Last week I reported that the bids, a lot of the work had come in. We were holding post-bid meetings on Thursday and Friday of last week, and in fact, most all day Thursday and all day Friday, we held post-bid meetings with the apparent low bidders on some of the trades. It was primarily with earthwork, with structural steel, precast, concrete, roofing, and the electricians. We've been receiving this week responses to questions we had for them and clarification, as well as we've asked a number of them to provide ideas on what's called valued engineering to give us, in their professional opinion, thoughts on what might be able to change in our specs that could result in the same quality of a project, but might use a different type of material, let's say a different rubberized roofing material that might save some money, but would have the same quality that was in the original specs. So we've been receiving those responses this week, as well as calling references, and Monday we will have some conference calls with our construction manager to resolve some of these issues and hopefully be in a position to come back to you in a couple of weeks with some recommendations. We've already put—also put together a rough timeline for the real-time sensitive items, which are primarily the concrete work, the precast walls. Those have a very extensive lead time once you place the order for them to actually be delivered on-site, cured, designed, and brought to the location. And the structural steel as well, that has a fairly long lead time. Once we sign the contract, it would take a number of months for that material to arrive on-site. So it appears as though we're not going to see cranes out at the location actually lifting things and moving things around until probably late winter or early spring. So—but—but once we have chosen the contractors for the structural steel and the precast, we'll get into a little bit more detail about delivery dates, so that's yet to come.
I—I know that those two things are time-sensitive. If you make a decision or a decision's made, how soon do you need our approval as the board to proceed with releasing the order?
Well, depending on the timing and putting together the contracts for these firms, we—it may be at your first, at your committee meeting in February. We may ask you to take final action on those contracts, or if we've got something prior to that, we may actually schedule a—a special meeting, and there will be several days' notice provided for that. But again, it depends on how close we get to your meeting in—in February to actually have that decision made.
Well, there's normal final action could be taken at the committee meeting also, so there'd only be a two-week window.
Correct. So the other activity that's going on at the Convention Center is the ballroom. You awarded some contracts back in—in mid-December for the lobby, the hallway, and the ballroom renovations. The lobby and the hallway are owned jointly by the Condominium Association, which the county is a member of. That work will begin, is scheduled to begin tomorrow, and depending on how long it takes the electrician to get the fixtures in, we could be in and out within three to four weeks. So the flooring, if you happen to be up in that area, the next couple of days, you may actually see painters up there, or you might begin seeing the flooring contractor in there kind of leveling the concrete and filling in holes and things like that to get ready for the—the flooring material, the hallways to actually go down. And we're going to be doing our best to try and avoid any conflicts with activities that may be going on in the ballroom, so we don't disrupt their use of it.
What about the—the restrooms off that hallway?
That's part of this proposal as well. Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot that, but that's part of the proposal as well.
And the reason I mention is my wife went into the ladies restroom by—but anyway, she said there were some problems there with the counter or something, and she was concerned about safety.
Right, some of—the—the ballroom—or the—the bathrooms across the hall from the ballroom are functional, but the—the partitions, the vanities, those were all put up on a temporary basis, so they could be used and serviced the ballrooms, but they're by no means, are they, in the final period?
But they're going to be worked on.
Correct, yes, they're part of this contract.
Okay.
Bill?
Sir, are there breakout rooms that are being worked on also? Do we have some of those?
No, we do not have any breakout rooms, although the ballroom itself can be split up into five rooms, so you could have some breakout rooms. You could split that up into breakout rooms, so that will be done. But the only breakout rooms that are available right now are breakout rooms that are actually owned by the hotel and in their section of the building.
If we need them, we have access to them.
Yes, yes, we do.
Bill, can I ask one other question while you're on the Convention Center? This is not our project, I understand, but there's been this dedicated entrance for freighters that's been under construction, and it just seems like it's been sitting there for months now. You know what's going on there?
That's the entrance on the west side of the building, near the—just north of the main entrance?
Yes.
That is part of this particular contract, so that work will be completed.
Okay.
What what has been missing from it are installation of the—the doors themselves and the walk-off carpets, and that will be done as all—as part of this contract.
Okay, thank you.
Our sign will be placed on that same false front that you see there that says freighters, but we won't be putting a sign up until we've actually got a Convention Center. But—it has been allowed for.
That will be the entrance to the Convention Center?
That will be one of the entrances. There will be another entrance further north, right next to the Convention and Visitors Bureau's office. So actually, if you're coming to the facility, you can enter—you could enter off of the east, you could enter off of any one of the three entrances that will be on the side of the building. We'll try and direct them to the—the entrance you just talked about, because that's been designed to accommodate registration tables and things like that.
Thank you.
Just last week, we talked a little bit about board priorities for 2014. I met this week with the airport director and with the central dispatch director to talk a little bit about the marketing plan and ideas for the airport. They've got a lot of work they've done already, have some great ideas, and actually, as a result of partnering with the FBO, we've got a—a great tool that we can use to identify potential customers that we can do some targeted marketing to, and we'll certainly be taking advantage of that. The 911 director will be crafting the plan himself. We did spend quite a bit of time this week talking about some of the content that may be changing. As many of you may know, and you've seen some 911 plans from other counties in the state of Michigan, they're all pretty much the same. A lot of the boilerplate is the same, but there are some obvious, unique issues we want to address in our plan that Mr. Conglin will be including in a draft that he will be sharing with you in the coming months. So keep your eyes peeled for that, and we'll certainly share updates on both of those projects as we move forward. The other thing, if I could back up a little bit about the airport, one of the things that the airport director is doing is she's working with some of the vendors out there to see if she can secure any contributions they may want to make towards marketing material as well, and certainly, we would note their contribution on that marketing material and the service that they provide at the facility. With respect to the landfill, our landfill director, along with ECT, our engineers, will be making a number of presentations at some professional organizations at the national level regarding the bioreactor. In fact, later this month, he'll be in Baltimore speaking with his professional organization, landfill managers organization, and he's been asked to spend some time talking about his experience with the bioreactor, how it started, what the initial concept was, the legislative changes that needed to be made, and then the science behind it as well. And in another session, the engineers will be talking about the scientific engineering kind of stuff that will include lots of tables and charts and math figures and things like that, so hopefully, Mr. Williams plans to make a lot of connections there with other counties, and so we can do to continue trying to market the—the bioreactor.
It's interesting you mention that, because I think it was in the Times-Herald here maybe a week ago, they had an article about the technology in the Septage Bioreactor coming in from Germany, and it was using manure and foodstuffs and stuff. And I think they're putting it in—in—in someplace in Michigan, but it wasn't in a landfill. It apparently is a standalone operation, which is somewhat different than ours.
The last thing, I just want to thank Commissioner Riley for helping us find, locate, and address a problem out at the emergency management offices. And we've had—ever since we've taken over that building, we've had problems with the furnace system. There were some new gas lines run into the building as well, and there was a gas leak that was identified, and Commissioner Riley spent an awful lot of the day that he probably didn't anticipate, helping dig holes to uncover— didn't anticipate, helping dig holes to uncover leaking gas lines, so that's been fixed.
I would like it noted that he missed the entire meeting.
Yeah.
He was outside when it was 17 below, by the way.
It wasn't near as warm where I was.
So unfortunately, as a result of what was uncovered, we are going to have to replace some of the heating, some of the heaters in the emergency management building, and that'll be coming to you sometime in the future. They're actually out for bids right now. So, this morning, I did meet with the convention and visitors bureau to give them an update on what's going on with the convention center. They have quite a few questions, and they're getting very excited about marketing the location, and I think they've got some great ideas, and we'll see, what, 14 holds for the tourism season in St. Clair County.
I just chime in, I think to reiterate some things that Bill says. It's going to kind of be my focus, I think, in the next couple of years, is, you want to say focus? When we go back to the first meeting we had at the beginning of the year, we had a lot of different things that we had identified. It wasn't anything that we hadn't talked about previous, just like the airport. We need to keep, you know, we need to keep those things on the table to, how do we make that airport the best it possibly can be? How do we have the landfill? You know, we talked about the landfill. How do we make that landfill the best it can be? How do we, you know, start really looking at, I wouldn't say different departments, I don't want single departments out, but how do, you know, how do we tweak those things just so we get them, you know? In our minds, I guess, as commissioners, as good as they could possibly be, so that's really going to be a big focus of mine. Not saying I won't dream up a thing or two along the way, but I think we've all been around in this place long enough now that the Lurde curve, you know, we can, we can really start to focus on that kind of stuff, so.
Can I, do I need a motion to accept the administrator's report?
I would so move.
I support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. This line is business. I do have one thing before Jay gives us a presentation, and I'll come to you in just a second. I met with Riley Township last night, I met with, in fact, all my township boards except one in regards to the landfill meetings that will be taking place February 4th and February 5th, and told them that Matt Williams would be giving a presentation there, and hopefully reason bring it up here, so Bill Kaufman, if he hasn't gotten notice out to all the township and boards and municipalities, so that they make themselves available to the meeting.
Actually, I put Matt in charge of that, to get ahold of him, and I told him to physically give him a call too and let them know. They can come either date, it's not cities or whatever, those are the two dates. And I am actually probably going to attend the MTA up in Traverse City this year, and that's a place where you get a chance to see everybody, so I can just, you know, hey, we'd like to have you there, you know, at that time.
I'll also beat up the MTA, and they do have a special presentation up there, if you're interested, on the landfill up there for recycling, if you fit into your schedule.
I did not know that.
Okay. And that can be, you can just find that on the MTA website. I printed it off for myself, so it's in my folder when I get up there. Hey, Bill?
I had one matter that I just wanted to discuss for the commission's information and for the public. As you know, I sit on the community coordinating council, representing the board of commissioners, and at yesterday's meeting, we had a very interesting, I thought, presentation about a new program that's going to be available to veterans, specifically veterans who are facing homelessness in St. Clair County. And we've recently, through the Center for Independent Living, received funding from the United States Department of Veterans Affairs, and this program is administered through the disability network to provide supportive services to very low-income veterans who are facing homelessness. The case managed services are designed to improve veterans' families' housing stability and may include assistance in securing housing for those homeless veterans, daily living needs, healthcare, transportation, legal aid, childcare. There will be personal financial planning and counseling and temporary financial assistance to help veterans who are in danger of crisis, you know, housing crisis where they're about to lose their housing. And to be eligible for these services, client must be a veteran or a member of a family in which the head of the household or the spouse of the head of the household is a veteran, at least, must have at least one day of active military service. Any type of discharge makes them eligible, except for dishonorable. There are certain income eligibility requirements, and being homeless or at imminent risk of being homeless is also one of the criteria. And so there'll be information about this through our local center for independent living and also at, sitting on the veterans' board. Our veterans staff is also going to be helping to administer this multi-county program. So I think it's a, it's a great service that we will have for some of our unfortunate veterans.
Would you be able to get us any quarterly or whenever, just an initial documentation of what we're going to be doing and where it's going to be going, you know, assisting the veteran of potential homelessness, because we're going to run, work it through our veterans downstairs, I imagine, and the court is, or working with them?
I can get you more information about the program. It's just, it's just, it's just kicking off as we speak this week, and so there isn't really any, anything to report yet, but it is a demonstration program, and we're hoping that at the end of the year, that we'll be able to document how effective this program is and may make it a permanent program that'll be available both in St. Clair County and Macomb County.
Okay, are we ready for Jay?
Thanks, I appreciate just a few minutes, and this is not an in-depth presentation by any means or anything like that, but it's more of a discussion I wanted to have with you guys before we possibly take on a concept or an idea within the county. As you're aware...
Before Jay gets started, he called me, and ironically, we were talking about going to the iPad deals, you know, and paperless, so on and so forth, and Jay was talking about it, said, we just talked about it at our board meeting the other day briefly, and I said, well, just come on in and give us your report.
At the courthouse, and obviously, we have two distinct buildings that operate, not independently, but different things go on, obviously, in each building. In the courthouse, the prosecutor's office is essentially paperless, the friend of court is essentially paperless. Since 2003, in my office, we have scanned domestic case file documents, so divorce-type cases or paternity-type cases, we've scanned and turned them into a digital image. While our criminal, in our civil case types, we haven't done that, which begged the question, what, why are we doing this if we're not using it, you know, for some purpose? So we've spent some time now, we're getting to the point where our criminal, as well as our civil, are now, at least for 2013 and moving forward, are going to be 100% digital, available to produce to people through email, through online requests, those kinds. The registered deeds office, which is also under me, is entirely paperless. If you walk in with a filing, stamps produced, stamps applied to the document, it's scanned, and you're literally handed the document back to you. Other departments in the courthouse, and I'll speak from that perspective, and we can apply the same logic to the administrative building as well, but other departments in the courthouse, district court, the circuit court, judges' offices, or the circuit court administrator, if you will, probate court, they have the same dilemma as I do. They have historic documents. And to put a number on it, to give you a little bit of perspective, in the administration building and in the courthouse, right now, you're paying for about 10,000 square feet of nothing but boxes.
Been there.
Those, those boxes are stacked on top of each other, some of them are collapsing on others. We had district court, we had a sewer pipe break in the courthouse, and we lost district court records. Those are gone forever. There's no replacing them. So I've had various discussions with Chairman Bowman, with Mr. Kaufman, about at some point, we have to have a coordinated effort in the county. It can't just be one department at a time that's making a decision to go in a direction. The economy of scale that's available, if we were to take a coordinated effort and have one central entity that's going, okay, somebody's got to put a plan together and open those options up to every department in the county who has historic records that are in a paper format to cooperate with me. I can go on my own, I can close my door, I can do it all within my budget, and I'll be happy and won't say a word, but it doesn't make sense to the citizens. It doesn't make sense that I'm contracting with a company to do something that another department's going to go and contract with a different company to accomplish the same thing. So I guess what I'm getting at is, I wanted to bring the concept to you guys and ask you if that is something that you might, through Mr. Kaufman, say, let's do a little exploration into this and start to look at it, because technology, number one, is the most, the technology that we have from a digital standpoint is one thing that's going to make us, makes us more efficient. Circuit court records are public records. If I can get those documents in a format that people can request them online or search them online, that alleviates a whole lot of responsibility for my staff on a daily basis. It also puts them in a preservation format that they're not destroyed when a sewer pipe breaks, or a tornado hits, or a fire hits. That's the big crux for me, is the transparency. We talk about transparency, you talk about making us better, department by department. Those documents are the citizens' documents, and they're not in a user-friendly format. I would argue that we spend man-hours, probably around 20 to 25 man-hours a week, just searching for files, for paper files, that we know are in the courthouse, but where are they at? Are they in a box downstairs? Did the judge's secretary take them up to their office? Does somebody in my office have them on their desk? There's no way to know. When you have them in a digital format, we can all look at them at the same time, and we always know where they're at. They're backed up redundantly, so when, if you have a catastrophe on a hard drive, you still have them backed up somewhere else, you don't lose the documents. But I think that that concept shouldn't be isolated to just my office. I think that concept should be looked at from a bigger scale, from county-wide, because I'm certain that there's administrative departments, your office alone, that would like to get to that point of their historical records, and even their current records in electronic format.
Jay, how many other departments are you thinking about that need to access records or scan and save rich records?
Well, just from my, from my perspective, in the courthouse, the district, district court, probate court, probation, there's a number of them that have. Friend of court is essentially paperless, the prosecutor's office is essentially paperless, but the irony is this, I'm not paperless entirely, nor are the courtrooms paperless. So the friend of court in the prosecutor's office who are paperless need to print documents to give them to us. What are we doing? Why are we wasting our time if in the end, we're going to print documents?
When you said you would save them redundantly, you're talking about having it on a hard drive somewhere, but you're also going to store it off-site somewhere?
We can store it off-site, and, you know, at some point, this does cross to an IT discussion of security and safety, but yeah, redundancy, we do our own redundant backup, as you guys are aware, but you can go beyond that. You can store it elsewhere out of the county, so in the event that something happens, catastrophe to both backups for the county, you still have it out there somewhere else.
And this isn't anything that doesn't happen other places, we're not reinventing the wheel here, but I think to the point is it's something that we embrace, hence, I don't care to throw something on Bill Kaufman's plate, but if it's something Jay, we probably have a discussion with Jay about, maybe he could be the one that would spearhead this type of effort, because I have confidence in his ability, and I think we all know Jay, and he's had administration roles previous before the clerk deal, so.
I, for one, am glad to see this conversation come up, because I believe it's the direction that we are going to go eventually.
We talked about it eight, nine years ago, when I first got on the board, the paperless deal, and if anybody walks downstairs, or they walk in that thing, you see a whole lot of boxes laying around.
I've seen it all over the years, from being on before, I saw those boxes, and I know exactly, and I know for a fact, Jay, from being in your office since you took over, there's been a lot of changes, and you're going that direction, and it's very obvious that everybody likes it, and I think it's the direction we got to go.
You know, one of the things that I observed when I first came here is, we all agree that technology is what we have to use to be more efficient, but, and please don't misunderstand what I'm saying when I say this, what I would ask from the board of commissioners is, let's move that concept to one of your priorities, that, yeah, we talk about it, but let's, let's literally make it an item that is a priority, and you're going to dedicate...
That being said, what type of window would you need to have this done?
Well, the first thing I would like to do, if it's, if it's a viable discussion, is spend some time communicating with other departments to get a real, a concrete grasp on what they do need, because I can make, I can make a speculation on one of the departments in the admin building that they might need this, but after a discussion with them, I might find out they need less, or they need actually dramatically more. But I didn't want to really have that discussion until we talked, and...
I think it's real positive, and I was thinking about Bob Wiley, because he's got a ton of records of strength, Commissioner.
Absolutely.
The morgue itself.
Everybody's got paper, you know, but going to his point, somebody to coordinate it, somebody to, that would be, you know, doing a part-time job for somebody, you know, I mean, that's, we need to talk more about it, but I don't think it's a concept that we should not, not be...
And I, I think there's another reason for this, and I've talked with Jay recently about the registered deeds office, learned quite a bit about it in a couple-hour visit, talk about old records and technology, but the other thing is, it's going to, it's going to improve our service to our citizens dramatically, dramatically. We will become much more customer-oriented than we are now.
I do have a funny for you, and I came down to your office, it had to be two years ago, and I had to get a copy of my marriage license, and, because we misplaced it. My original marriage license had the wrong date on it for my wife's birthday and the wrong date for the marriage. So of course, he printed one off, I took it home to my wife, and I held this up for two days, I didn't tell her. Because you've got to get remarried, our whole marriage was null and void. She cried for about a day, finally, oh, we're really married.
Truthfully, she was very happy when she found out.
You know, there's one little more point, and it comes from the financial standpoint. In the end, you know, the operations that we partake in and the dollars that you guys allocate come from the citizens. And anytime that I, this is my own perspective, anytime that I can find a way to be more efficient with those dollars, I think I'm doing a better service to the citizen. And an example I would give you is, we use OnBase as our, as our warehouse for imaged documents. It's a very expensive item that we purchased, and Bill, you were, you would probably be able to give better numbers than I ever could on what it costs to establish that. But my fear with just going out and saying, give us a bid to come in and do this for us, is these people will give us a number, they'll walk in with the technology that exists today, but it's going to be a time to accomplish what we want accomplished. And to give you just some anecdotal evidence, Bruce Francic, who's my registered deeds chief deputy, we're looking at preserving some of our old bound books that have data in it, and those are odd shapes and odd-sized papers. So we jump in our tablet, and we do a search for an app to convert an image to a PDF. And for $4.99, we bought an app that you can install in a tablet, that if you want to set it up in a jig and slide the books underneath it and flip the page and take a photo, you can convert all those books into PDFs for a $4.99 app. If I went out and said, how much is it going to cost me to have this book converted? It'd be $700 or $800 for a single book. And my point is, technology is changing so rapidly, I get nervous wanting to sign back up for a contract for the next best technology, spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on it, only to find by the time we get to the end, it's, there's better. Internally, I think we can manage that.
Look, we could move this forward, possibly you, Bill, could get together, maybe have within three months a plan together?
Yep.
If you two work, would that be enough to where you two work together to come up with a plan for the county?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, just my perspective, we've, we've been, put quite a bit on Mr. Kaufman lately.
Bill, just kick it to you. Where else are you going to put it if Bill isn't involved in...
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can report it to Bill.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, you know, we've cut staff in the administration, and we've got a lot of irons in the fire right now with the convention center, and I think this is incredibly important to do. I'm not, because I've seen Wiley's records, and I understand, and I've been to the bottom of the courthouse, and I've seen all the boxes, I understand exactly what you're talking about, and that's...
Well, in the next three months, Bill's going to be tied up pretty extensively with the convention center. Would a six-month window be better? Come back to Bill in six months.
I'm not convinced that Jay can't take this and run with it and then just keep...
And report it back to you guys.
Rather than try and craft that at our table here this afternoon, why don't we just ask Jay and Bill to get together and come back to us with some sort of plan?
Totally agree with you.
Yeah, I'd support that if you want that in motion.
I don't believe, I don't believe we need a motion.
No, I don't think so. I want to do it.
All right, Jay, you have anything else?
Thanks.
No, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other miscellaneous business? All right, 14.
Mr. Chairman, I had moved that we receive and file packets and all information present.
Forward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.